Well, hello again and welcome to Roland's Reviews. We are back. We are back. How are you doing, Mr. Blackson?
I'm doing good, Ms. Roland. Doing good, doing good.
It is Friday, so that I have no complaints. I am happy as a lark. Alright. Um, as you enter the chat room, folks, please do us one small favor. Hit the little thumb. That is the like button. We promise it is free. It won't cost you anything. And if you have Facebook, Instagram, social, please share this out on your various forms of social media. Alright, we will do roll call soon. We know a lot of people are busy. And alright, they're coming in. People trying to get some holiday shopping out of the way, but we still wanted to jump on and share this information with you. Alright, they're coming in. They are coming in. Okay. Here we go. Do Something Different is here. Alright, they're coming in. Look, Rob Cat is back. Kami is back. Kami must really like, uh, ever since Kami started, she hasn't missed a live. Uh, and, and we appreciate that, folks. With these thousands of content creators, there's anywhere, I mean, you could be on any other channel, but you're here, and we want you to know that it is much appreciated. Um, we'll go ahead and start the roll call. If you'd like me to call your name out, all you need to do is say hello, send an emoji, whatever you choose to do. We're just glad you're here. Alright, we're going to start with CJ Parks. How are you? Kami, again, is here. Thank you. Isaiah is here. Do Something Different, Doreen, Rob Cat, meow. Uh, where are we here? Cha Cha, Florida, who runs the channel? Laurie, CSL, RC Lauren. Alright, we have someone new here. Alright, great. Perfect. Alright, if you are familiar with this topic, and you know, we have been talking about it, but we have so many new people joining the channel, they may not know all of the details. And Tina, how are you, love? Arena Uncensored, please go ahead and drop your channel link, so we can send people right on over. And, uh, look at the title. Tom Homan pulls up to Chicago. Mass deportations incoming. I cannot wait. Um, I am excited. Mayor Johnson is shook, as he should be. Um, where are we here? Okay, yeah, there you go. If you're here and, uh, you, you like this content, and you've been watching the channel for a while, please go ahead, hit the subscribe button. The Arena Uncensored, uh, Blackson just dropped his channel link. Um, and so go on over and, uh, sub him up as well. We're glad that you are here. Tina says, "I'm excited too." January 20th, cannot get here quick enough. Tina, I can't wait. I could, it, it's taking too long, entirely too long. And so, um, yeah, if you're familiar with this subject matter, uh, you're probably feeling a little giddy, just like I am. I cannot wait for this to happen. We have waited a long time. Four years of failed Democratic policies, we finally have something positive to look forward to. You, Frasier Reaper, how are you? We're glad you're here. Um, and, and so we're going to go ahead and get started. Um, we know that the sanctuary cities, uh, run by, uh, progressive Democrats have totally ignored their constituents. They have squandered billions of taxpayer dollars, and again, while ignoring their constituents, and they're trying to bilk them out of some more money by raising taxes. And you know, we've been focusing on Chicago a lot, because we've had Prosperity on, and some of the people who were in the fight, uh, with her as well. And so, uh, let me get this short video going. I'll try to keep up with your comments. Uh, please share on Facebook, Truth Social, whatever forms of social media that you use. Bring more people into the conversation, people. Here we go. Let's see what, uh, they're talking about here.
Black Trump's new borders czar says Chicago will be ground zero for mass deportation efforts that will begin right here. And he had some harsh words for Mayor Johnson and Governor Pritzker. Tom Homan, Trump's handpicked borders czar, was in Chicago for a GOP holiday party. He called on Pritzker and Mayor Johnson to come to the table and not impede the administration's efforts, but he had harsh words, including saying, "Chicago is in trouble," quote, "because your mayor sucks and your governor sucks." Earlier, we spoke with Chicago Alderman Ray Lopez, who met with Homan while he was in town. He says the messaging may have been too harsh, but Pritzker and Johnson should be working with the federal government to deport migrants who are breaking the law.
If you are here undocumented and trying to go about your business, then let's figure something out. But if you are here choosing to engage in gang activity, murder, drugs, prostitution, human trafficking, or sex crimes against minors, then absolutely, your number has topped.
Governor Pritzker's office responded to Homan's remarks, saying, "It is no secret that Illinois will face countless baseless attacks over the next four years from the Trump administration." Rather than responding to every ridiculous boast from Trump lackeys, Governor Pritzker is focused on what he was focused on during the first Trump term, leading our state with complete competence, that is, instead of chaos. Homan, by the way, was Acting Director of Immigration and Customs Enforcement during Trump's first administration.
Uh, can you believe these idiots? Oh my God. Um, so Pritzker's got to go. And yes, uh, you're right, Doreen. Uh, let me see if I can find, uh, your statement. They postponed it. So you remember, those of you who've been on the channel for a while, and those of you, we have so many new people, I can go back and drop a link. Ms. Prosperity's been coming on and telling us everything that's going on in the, in those city hall, uh, meetings. And I don't care. You can run, but you can't hide. The people are not letting him go. And yes, he does need to be arrested. Pritzker can go with him. Um, I just think it's a shame, uh, and I'm so glad that, uh, Homan is there. And, uh, Tom Homan, uh, you know, met with the residents. He talked to the residents of Chicago. They've been asking him. So I am so, so he's saying that's ground zero. So I am so glad, when you think about Prosperity, again, we bring people on the show who are actually experiencing this. So this is not hearsay. How you doing, Beverly? Blackson, what do you think about this, uh, this latest development with, uh, the borders are going to, uh, Chicago?
Um, I think it's a good move. Um, what I'm not understanding is, you have somebody like Eric Adams. Eric Adams is cooperating with Trump. Eric Adams is most likely, you know, when you look at Eric Adams and you compare it to somebody like Mike Johnson, it doesn't make any sense to me. Why would Mike Johnson not take the same route as Eric Adams, you know? Why not, you know?
Stubborn. Um, and like I said,
Stupid.
Well, same thing. So, but we, we've been talking about, you know, Eric Adams. I give it to him. He, he, when you, once you read the tea leaves, once you read the writing on the wall. Yes, Rob Cat, New York is, uh, has been destroyed. They're at the top of the list. So I give it to him. They already have you under indictment, so you, you owe them nothing. If you had stayed on cue, you know, you, you know, you, you may as well work with Trump. Why not? Okay, CJ, uh, Trump made a jab at Trudeau that Canada can become our 51st state, and he might lead, let him be governor. Yeah, Trump is funny. Tina, Mayor Eric Adams used to be a police officer, and I think he really does care about the citizen. Yeah, he does, Tina. If you compare him to some of these other, um, mayors, he does seem to care more. Uh, and I, I, I truly believe that as well. Uh, I mean, he's, go ahead.
Eric Adams knows how to read the tea leaves, you know? And I think that's why, you know, he's a person that knows how to adapt and adjust. So I only say that because, you know, right now, he's a Democrat. So I, I feel like he became a Democrat, because at the time, that was the thing to do. But now he's looking at the situation and reality, and he's like, wait a minute, hold up. You know, my morals and values fit this right here, what Trump is doing. And these migrants being in New York City is not working. It's not working. We cannot afford it. It is draining us. It's just not making sense.
Yeah.
You know that old saying, if it don't make dollars, don't make sense? Eric Adams is like, it's not making sense. But then you got somebody like Johnston over in, uh, Chicago, where his people are saying, yo, we don't want this, and he's still, ooh. Yeah, he's just dumb. He's an idiot.
It's like you're rubbing, running into a brick wall, and you continue to run into the brick wall, and you're expecting, uh, different results. That's how I look at it. Um, and, and it's just to me, I, I don't get, I don't get it. He is, I mean, the guy is going into bad health, like I said, with the panic attacks, anxiety attacks, and you, you're not listening to, and then your, your city council, okay? Everyone voted 50 to 0 against you, and you're still not willing to make changes. So it, it's just, whoa.
Because he definitely don't work for the people. I guess that's the difference. Eric Adams, because.
For the people. He's not.
Yeah, Eric Adams is definitely.
That's quite evident. He is definitely not working for the people. So I have this clip here, since we're talking about Mayor, uh, Eric Adams. Then I have a video I'll share with you, where Tom Homan was actually in Chicago talking. How you doing, Robert Butler? Get that illegal who made that middle finger at the Chicago red people out of there. Right, Robert? Uh, I agree. I'm with you. Um. Okay, and so let's listen to what Eric Adams, like I said, he's, he's had a come-to-Jesus meeting. So Eric Adams is definitely changing his tune. And I, I feel like you blacks, and he, he may even be, uh, vote on our side now. You understand what I'm saying?
His policies line up with ours, definitely, when it comes to the border, when it comes to the economy. It all lines up. It all lines up. You know, he's, his only thing now is just the name, Democrat. But all his values, and, and not only what he's believing, but it's, it's his personal values that are aligned with what he's believing. And he, you know, so it's like, yeah.
And I agree. And, and woke mayor Brandon Johnson has been put on notice. He's, uh, dead set on protecting illegals. Okay. So, uh, we'll see how that works, because a lot of people can do a lot of talking. But, uh, when the rubber meets the road, I'm sure he's not going to jail. He'll move out of the way. Hit that like button, folks, if you're enjoying this content. I'll continue.
Could there be more cooperation with ICE agents, though?
Yes, I do believe that. I, I stated this prior to the election. And this is what get me, Marsha. People are saying, okay, uh, after the president-elect is coming in, Eric is now saying different things. No, I was saying this prior to the election. I was saying those who are committing crimes in our city, uh, must be addressed, and we should change the current sanctuary city law to address that issue. Amanda, um, Bloomberg knew that, Mayor Koch knew that, the previous administration altered that, and I thought it was a big mistake.
So do you think you're gonna have any chance of re-alternate, re-changing it, so that there's more cooperation?
Well, the city council made it clear, they don't want to change that. Uh, they stated they're not willing to change the sanctuary city law. I think they're wrong. Um, I have my teams looking at my power as executive orders. Um, I'm going to sit.
Is it possible you could do an executive order?
We're looking at that. The legal team, the corporation council, that they just, uh, approved. Uh, uh, they're looking at, the officers looking at, do I have the power to do so? I have to protect the people of this city. That is my north star. It always has been. And if you are committing crimes on migrants, on, on immigrants, undocumented, documented, it's all the same.
It's all the same. Alright, and so, uh, Doreen made a very good statement. I did watch some of that, Doreen. The city council meeting in Chicago today, it was, I did, yes. It is kind of long. Um, I may play a snippet for you. Uh, but yeah, so he can run, but he can't hide. And I think, uh, you know, they postponed it. Uh, but I'm sure, um, those, I mean, those, uh, Flip Chicago Red and everyone who's there at those city council meetings have told them, we're, we're gonna get you out of here. How you doing, Maniska? Uh, hope you're doing okay. Immuna, how are you? Uh, shalom to you as well. Glad you're here. Why her? Here is, uh, today's, uh, today's Chicago City Council. Okay. Um, Suave, how are you? If you're protecting the people, then you shouldn't have allowed them to... Suave, I agree. I agree. Tina said, "I can see him turning Republican, but I see him as a decent Democrat." That is what Democrats used to be like. Okay, Tina. Okay. Yeah, and they just went all the way, just crazy. While your city is going bankrupt, you ran out of money. And woke Brandon Johnson, uh, he'll be prosecuted if he tries to, uh, prevent or stop deportation. Um, yes, why her? I was watching that. They postponed the meeting. I don't care how many meetings they postpone, the people will still be there. Exactly. Suave. Thank you for your stupid chat. I'm spamming the comment section with hearts, and they're just for you, love. Thank you so much. Um, CJ said it. CJ, you've been here for a while. I've been saying that. Eric Adams was indicted because he spoke up, and now that Trump's has won, he's doubling down to get rid of these migrants. Yes, CJ, and he didn't even say anything bad. It was very mild, but with Democrats, you don't get off code and get out of line. You toe the company line. And so mass deportations incoming. And Democrats are trying to be tough. Um, but they're gonna lose this battle. Uh, this is crazy. We said this, uh, last election, uh, was a referendum from the American people. Uh, 60 to 70% of Americans do not agree with the Democrats' immigration policy or lack thereof. So guess what? You're never gonna, as Blackson was saying, you'll, they'll never win again.
Wait, are you saying they're going to lose, or they've already lost? The Democrats? You talking about the Democrats? You said they are going to lose?
I said they'll never win again with these policies.
No, definitely not with these policies.
70% of Americans don't agree with their immigration policies. Uh, so it was, it was more than just the economy, and we're all affected.
I don't even think they were polling people on that. I think they were polling their people on, uh, baby removal and trans bathroom. That's all they were doing. They were, oh, they were trying to keep that narrative going. I don't even think they polled their people when it came to migration and open borders. I really don't think they polled their people. I think it's more like 99.7%. Now, only 3.3% don't know about it. They got their hands up their butt.
You could be right.
Or they just don't care. But no, yeah, I know I'm right, because, because they keep, that was the narrative on their side. Baby removal, baby removal, trans bathroom, baby removal. That was it. And they were trying to switch that.
Repeat.
Alright, they were trying to do that hard. They were trying to make that the top issue.
And they were. Immuna, do you think Trump will pardon Eric? Immuna, I do believe that Trump will pardon Eric, uh, Adams. If you remember, you know, um, Trump predicted about a year ago, Trump predicted that Eric Adams would be under indictment, and now look what happens. Trump predicted this. Robert, I hope this isn't offensive, but deport that Venezuelan family that got a house after two years when residents are having trouble to get one with good credit. Robert, and that's why Americans are angry. Okay? And that's not being offensive. That's just speaking a, a fact, something that is actually going on. That's what Democrats do. They don't do anything for Americans. That's the problem. So, Robert, you're just speaking facts. And I don't think anyone here in the chat section is going to disagree. You didn't say anything offensive. You just spoke a truth. And that's what we've been talking about on this, uh, you know, channel as it relates to American citizens being denied, being homeless, not being able to receive anything, and then you bring, I mean, come on, like I said before, America didn't have enough crime, you had to import crime. Uh, America didn't already have a housing issue, and then you import millions of more people? Of course. It's a disaster. That's what it is. And Robert, like you said, you have Americans who've been here, Americans of all ethnicities and nationalities, they've been here all their lives, and they can't buy a house. You have stringent credit, okay, laws and rules and guidelines. But you come over here from another country, break the law by entering the country illegally, and you get the red carpet treatment. Make it make sense. Um, and Robert, that's what we've been talking about on here. Adams must have gotten Trump's, uh, Trump's tailor's phone number. His suit looks like he's a billionaire. Okay, CJ. Uh, yeah. Uh, Manaski, I watched the city council meeting in Chicago. Brandon Johnson canceled the, yeah. I don't care how, well, how many he cancels. Those people are showing up every time they're there. So, uh, Rob Cat, yes, America's greatest import this year seems to be, right, Rob? We had enough crime. What, we had to import more crime, because we, we didn't have enough in this country. Okay. Make it make sense, Rob. I, I may be a little slow. Kami, the Venezuelans will go online bragging about all the stuff they get for free. Yeah, remember? They're all over TikTok, and they're outside of, um, getting 10, 12, $15,000 a month in food stamps, buying food, out there selling all kinds of food. If an American is out there trying to sell food, what happens? Here comes the health scare. With all these rules and guidelines, you have to follow this, 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 and this. Ow, but you're not an American citizen, so you don't have to adhere to these rules and these guidelines. Make it make sense. And we're not supposed to be angry about that? And, and it is what it is. And you know, sometimes people come on and say, this channel's anti-immigrant. And we say in a hurry, no, 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 we are not anti-immigrant, but we are pro-American. And I don't mind helping anyone, but you help Americans first. I was watching a video the other day, all these veterans who are homeless, who need help, they can't get anything, and they fought for this country. That's not right. Doreen said, "Call ICE on January 20th." Yes, remember, they have a, uh, an 800 number.
Yep.
And so, what's it, a thousand bucks? So some people who are struggling financially, you might want to, if you know some people who shouldn't be here, hey, dial the 800 number. Right, uh, Doreen, anti-illegal. That's the key. Thank you. Remember the Venezuelan man posing, uh, posting those videos saying his daughter was born in Amer- and America? He dared Trump to remove him, because he's got nowhere, uh, to go. CJ, there, there are a lot of them. What's that, F A F O? We know what that means. So a lot of people are doing a lot of talking, but we'll see when the rubber meets the road. Um, Doreen wants that number. Okay, I'll, I'll have to look that up. And Immuna, as my mama used to say, charity starts at home. And that's all we've been talking about, uh, Immuna. Immuna, if you have children, that would be like you leaving your house, going to your neighbor's house, buying their children clothing, food, providing them shelter, and then you go back to your home, and your, your kids look like ragamuffins. They need clothes, they need food, and you don't give them anything. That's the, that's the same thing that's going on. Kami, the vets sleeping in the streets is just horrible in the hot summer and the freezing cold. Right, Kami, and they can't get anything, and they fought for this country.
So Real Twin, he said, "Eric Adams is not changing. The only ones to deport the criminals and not the illegal, uh, migrants that is flooding our city and draining our budget." Well, you gotta start somewhere, you know?
Anything is better than, than what we have now. So, yeah, starting points are good. Yeah, I'm with you, Blackson. Um, Suave, thank you for the super chat. Suave says, "I'm just wondering how we reached a point where politicians are fighting for people who enter this country without authorization." That's insane. Suave, that's all we've been saying, love, and I'm flooding the comment section with hearts just for you. Thank you so much for the super chat. That's what we've been saying. Um, we, we have not said anything negative about, uh, any race or nationality. I mean, we talked about the Haitians, uh, also coming over, so we were just.
Yeah, they said, a lot of them are, uh, self-deporting out of Spru- uh, Springfield.
Yeah, a lot, a lot. So we talked about, uh, not just Venezuelans, but Haitians and everything that was going on with that community, uh, of illegals, uh, people from Africa who came over illegally. So everyone has to go. That's just where we are, right? Everyone, pack up, goodbye. Alright, go figure it out in your own, uh, hometown.
CJ Parks.
Uh, everyone. Go ahead, uh.
CJ Parks was addressing C. Fryer. He said, "Trump's going to tell all those countries with tariffs and cut off aid, so that those countries will take them back." I'm sure that will happen. Yeah. Already, uh, Trump has talked to the, uh, the President of Mexico, and they're gonna have, he wants to, uh, bring back remain in Mexico.
And they know what's happening.
Yeah, and, and Mexico tried to get Buck. You know, we, you know, Mexico got a new president, their first female president. She tried to get Buck with Trump. Trump's like, no, 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 no. You ain't got no leg to stand on, and we gonna goddamn put them tariffs on you.
They don't want those tariffs.
No, neither does Canada.
And I think, who was it? I think it was Doreen. Doreen wants me to play a small part of, um, the city council meeting. So I'll play a snippet of that too for you, okay? So let me play this, because I told you, Tom Homan, uh, was in Chicago. Um, and you, if you remember, Blackson and I did a video on Danny C., and she's been all over Fox, and she was out in the audience, and, and some of her cohorts and comrades, they were out there as Tom Homan was speaking. Like I said, they've been asking him forever to come to Chicago, so he pulled up. So let's, we'll listen to some of this. I won't play all of it, but I will share this in the description box, uh, under my video, once the video ends. So you can click on the video and watch it in its entirety. But I will play some of it. Here you go. Lock Brandon up. Yes.
Because this President, President Biden took the most.
I hope you can hear it. Um, it is kind of muffled, but you know, this is from some, being recorded. I guess it looks like from someone's phone.
Yeah.
Uh, so maybe I'll put the closed caption on. Let me see. Okay, there we go. So I know his voice may sound muffled, so like I said, that's from someone's phone, but I do have closed captions on for you. Here we go.
Secure border in my lifetime, and unsecure on purpose.
Yeah.
I'm perfect, because in case the people are gonna be future Democratic voters.
Right, right.
Because you also overturned Trump's census real me, which means the African and Palestinian aliens that run this country will be in sanctuary cities.
Yes. That's right.
To result in more seats in the House with Democrats.
That's right.
What I'm probably gonna get away with.
Yes. 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 Yes.
People say, I read the paper every morning, and there's a lot of hit pieces on me, and I love it.
Yeah.
Because I get to live in their minds rent-free. That's kind of cool. And I probably thank anybody here tonight. I don't.
If a man really.
Alright, so, um, I'll play some more of that. Doreen, I just, uh, and I will play some of the, uh, meeting, city council meeting today. Here you go.
But I, I was going to the group I'm with today. I'm tired. I'm exhausted.
So I'll play some more of this, and again, some of the people, uh, were on with Prosperity. You can see them out in the audience. They just flashed. Okay, so let me go.
I've been on the road for three weeks, and some once I get up, and I'm tired. When I read a hit piece, it throws gas on my fire, and I'm ready to go down.
Yes.
If there any meeting here, why does that piece lie? I appreciate it. But here's what people need to understand. I've read all the stories, mass deportation, what a terrible thing.
No, it's not.
But here's what you need to understand, you need to tell your friends. Immigration court data over the last decade says this, nearly nine out of 10 people who claim asylum at the border never get released from US courts. They simply don't qualify for asylum. It's asylum fraud.
Right, right. That's right. That's right.
So all these amazing people releasing the country, nine out of 10 of them will get an order removed.
Yes.
Because if we don't, what the hell are we doing? We have to remove that what the law requires. Because the only other option is United States, United States, we send that message to the whole world. Ignore federal court order, which is crime.
Right.
You don't have to leave. The world's going to Trump the greatest nation in the world. So we have to execute those orders.
That's right. That's.
Give you due process. You want from the border court asylum, fine. You want to see a judge, fine. But who make that happen? But at the end of that due process, when you're ordered removed, that's what's going to happen.
That's right.
Due process requires. When people say unnecessary raises, no.
No, it's.
That's what the law requires.
That's right. That's right.
Is there any country in the U.S. where you choose to have asylum?
Can everyone hear, um, what he's saying? Uh, Cammy says Tom Homan, um, also should have spoke about the migrants that only migrate for free stuff. Yes, uh, uh, we're, the taxpayers, we're all taxpayers, we're funding it. And if I'm paying taxes, let me decide where my money is going. How about help Americans? Okay, that part. Um, so let me play some more of this and, um, can you, can you hear it? Okay, uh, Blackson?
Yeah, yeah, it's fine. The audio is fine.
Okay.
Are you a citizen child? That's on you.
That's on you. That's on you. Back? Right.
But you don't get a pass.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you. America first. Thank you.
But if you have your citizen job, look, look, you get amnesty, the law doesn't mean anything to them. When you come in the country, it's a crime.
It's a crime. That's on you.
That's not my goal. My goal is to enforce the law, but if you put yourself in that position, it can happen.
That, you gotta do what you gotta do.
There's, there's no plan, this administration right now, separate families, it just isn't. However, we want to enforce the law. So if you put yourself in that position, that's on you.
Right. That's right. Right. That's what America voted for.
It's not gonna be what you read to the, on the left saying, oh, there's army tanks.
We know, right, we know, fake news.
Every person that ICE arrests is a targeted enforcement operation. We know exactly who we're going to arrest.
Yes.
We know most likely where we're going to find them. We know a lot about the person because there's a vested kids fight. So it's not a sweep, it's not uncontrolled operation, it's very targeted operation. We know exactly what we're looking for and we'll be arrested. And every officer out there has, you know, uh, fourth amendment training, they know what they can and can't do.
Right.
So, you know, this could be well-run. It's not gonna be what you're reading on the left.
That's right.
So on top of the, the largest deep operation in the country, we're also going to, we got 340,000 kids. That the government just can't find. Over half a million children were trafficked and smuggled into the United States. They released them to sponsors, many were not properly vetted. Now the government can't find them. And they're not responding to inquiries, which means some of these children, I guarantee you, based on my three and a half decades, some of these children are in sex trafficking.
That's right. Yep, that's right. Right, right. All right. So you pretty much get the gist. He's talking to them. He's telling them pretty much, uh, what he's going to do. And I won't play it. Uh, as you can see, uh, we still have several minutes left, uh, for this video. I'll just share that video below so you can watch it in its entirety. If you're enjoying this content, please hit that like button. Forrest folks, how you doing? U S Army retired. Rawhide, round them up, move them out. Yes, I love it. Rowdy Yates, Clint Eastwood. Um, music therapy to interfere. Right. And they're doing a lot of talking. They're not gonna, I doubt very seriously if they're going to do that. Thank you, uh, Laurie. We're glad you're here, love. Uh, so let me share, uh, so Blackson from the small piece we listened to. What are your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are, you know, I guess Chicago will be first and then New York. So look like he's targeting all the sanctuary cities first and foremost to send a strong message to let people know, hey, you know, we're, we're going to do this and we're going, I guess, I'm guessing uh, Chicago is a deeper sanctuary city than New York, I guess. I guess it's more popular because you know Eric Adams is already.
Yeah, he's already trying to comply and trying to work with the borders are and Trump. So.
Right. So I think what, uh, Tommen is going to do is work with the go to the cities that talk about, oh, and we, we not gonna give him assistance. Okay, well, we'll just go to work first and get them out the way and that way we'll go to the other, you know, we'll, we'll get assistance, but we'll come to y'all and get that out of the way, knock that out.
Get it out of the way. Uh, again, they're, they're doing a lot of talking. Uh, talk is cheap. So uh, we'll see how that works. Uh, Immuna, I remember one senator said there are 34,000 children missing and unaccounted for. Yes. We can thank the Biden Harris administration for that. Cammy, Tom Homan, uh, really has that outlaw cowboy type swag. He's coming to clean up your town. Yes, and this is what is needed. After what happened the past four years? You know, and, and hey, if I lived in Chicago, I would be just giddy, you know? And those people don't deserve, when, look at the people that I brought on my show. Now we know prosperity more than anyone else. Look, look at, you know, the, the, the people, someone like prosperity that's been voting conservatively over 20 years. They're suffering and they're not even voting for this crap.
Right.
And so you know, your heart goes out. We always have people that come through, well, they voted for, not everyone. There are a lot of people in Chicago that don't vote for Democrats, but, uh, again, it, it, it's deep. Uh, with, uh, having prosperity on here and, and the Trump delicate. We've, we've learned about a lot of the crookedness and how, you know, when Republicans are on the ballot, when people go to vote, sometimes they don't even have ballots. All they have a Democratic ballot. So there's a lot going on there, a lot. Um, music therapy. I heard LA city council passed a super sanctuary ordinance. They are cruising for a bruising. Music therapy, I saw that, they, they're I said with California, let's just, let's see if we can get a huge saw and just cut them off and let them float away. There's, they're, they're just done. Um, Doreen, I voted 20 years Republican and have been, uh, attacked. Yes, Doreen, that's what they do. Uh, and Doreen, what Doreen was referencing earlier, uh, so they decided to delay the vote. Oh my God. So they act as if, um, they, I guess they like having criminals in their cities. That's what they're, that's what it seems like to me. How you doing, Trish? Um, I wouldn't give, uh, Homan and Trump, please, hey, I need help. This crime is atrocious. My, uh, constituents are being robbed, essayed, unalived, all of these hideous crimes. And you have someone here willing to help and you don't want help. Make it make sense, people. How you doing, Reverie? Please help the families with kids get documented, Tom Holmes, okay? Um, James, already made wall segments that cost 10,000 per section, selling for less than $500. Oh, wow. C Frye, uh, while Trump administration is working on mass deportation, Biden administration working on mass pardons. Interesting. Yeah, yeah. And, and who knows, uh, the Biden Harris administration, they are probably gonna try to blow everything up. Uh, before Trump enters office, you know, just to try to sabotage his efforts, but it's not gonna work. Brandon Johnson ran away like a coward. Oh, yeah. Uh, Doreen, just a little runaway. That was a song from the eighties too. Um, right, U S Army retired. I agree. Why is it that when there's children being trafficked, Democrats are in the picture? Uh, CJ, we know that, that, what's that, uh, Geico commercial is what we do? That's what they do. Brandon can't hide. No. And like I said, that would help. You save money. Chicago is broke. Chicago has a billion dollar deficit. Billion. With a B. On the verge of having a credit downgrade unless they get this budget passed. Um, Parks, uh, maybe because, right, Cammy? They're holding on to these, uh, illegals like they held on to slaves during slavery, like they owned the people. Which they probably feel they do since they're giving them thousands of dollars a month and food stamps and ha- free housing, checks. Oh my God. Music therapy, the, uh, went to a housing illegals and Americans can't get anything. It's awful. And they're trying to tax these people in Chicago and, and prosperity has been on here. She knows what's going on. A lot of the black homeowners are complaining. Uh, black and brown, Hispanic too. People who came over, uh, legally, they don't like it either. And they're saying the same thing that prosperity is saying. They're taxing, they're jacking their prices up to fund Biden's migrants. That's not fair to them. They don't even want them there. Remember Haiti, Clint, uh, Foundation and Dems were in power and children came up missing. Yes, CJ, yes. Why is it that Chicago mayors look so unprepared for their jobs? Uh, badgering because they always have D E I hires. I just dropped a truth bomb. Woo, did you like that badgering? Johnson has a puzzled look on his face most of the time. Yeah. That's what D E I hires. That's what you get because they are puzzled, they're lost and they don't know what they're doing. CJ, yeah, Human said he was gonna, he said he was gonna find the children. Johnson's just going to be humiliated again since he, he postponed this, um, uh, since he postponed this vote. Cause remember they voted 50 to one and when he tried to do the $300 million budget, the tax increase. C Frye, did you like that one? D E I needs to be D O A. I just dropped another truth bomb. The Chinese was out there cussing out Kamala for being dumb. Yes, Cammy.
Again, I missed that. I missed that.
Uh, Cammy is talking about a video, this older Chinese lady is talking, talking about Kamala.
Oh, yeah, at the Trump rally. Okay, yeah, yeah, I remember that, yeah.
It was hilarious.
That was funny. That was funny.
Oh my God.
Yes.
Rob Cat, it says snap. And so again, he's going to be humiliating. What do Democrats do? Tax and spend, tax and spend, tax and spend, wash, rinse, rubby. Mayor Johnson campaigned on not raising property taxes. So now he's a liar and a loser. He, he campaigned on not raising property taxes. Uh, now to literally break that promise is totally unacceptable. Uh, millions, of course, uh, millions and millions and millions and billions went to illegals. Uh, Chicago residents are infuriated as they should be. Hit that like button, folks, if you're enjoying this content. Share this out on your various forms of social media. I'll play some of this, uh, Doreen, I promised I would play some of this for you. So um, all right, here we go. And I can't play, I won't play the whole, uh, video, but I'll play some of this and then I'll do like the other video. I'll put it in the description box so you can access it and, uh, watch it in its entirety at a later time. Okay, here we go.
And the federal authorities come after him.
To a look, you know, this is, you know, in, in a matter that is being looked into, right? And as that matter continues to unfold, you know, conclusions that come from what is looked into, you know, we'll get a chance to review those conclusions once they're made. In the meantime, you know, I, I think that it's important to know that, you know, you know, we operate with, you know, a clear understanding that our sole responsibility, you know, continues and has to remain the people of Chicago. And that's what my focus is going to be on.
So the follow-up question then is, is if it does go south for your top aide, um, would he be included in standing up to the Trump administration in that case?
Well, I'm not sure if there's a direct, I think.
For the immigrants.
Yeah, right. No, I, I don't think I understand the last part, but I, I, no, I think I get it in terms of, you know, you know, how this, you know, the matter ultimately plays out and, you know, what decisions will be made e- either at the state level or federal level. You know, again, I'm, you know, not going to speculate. I just know that this matter is being looked into and as conclusions are ultimately drawn, uh, we'll, we'll be prepared to respond at that point.
Hey, Mayor.
Hey.
The Alders have said that they are hoping for efficiencies in this next budget as a way to balance it. And you've said repeatedly that you are against job cuts. Would you ever change your mind on that if that meant balancing this budget?
Well, no, look.
Did you see, you, yeah, I, what is this? I, I, did you see that? Oh my God, you can't make this up. What is he having a, 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 what is he having a stroke or another panic or anxiety attack? Did you see that, Blackson?
Yeah, I saw that.
Oh God, I'll continue.
There, there, there seems to be, if you're asking me if I'm okay with people losing their job, no. And I don't know anybody who is, by the way. Now, there are, you know, individuals that have brought, you know, ideas to the forefront and we're gonna look at all of them, you know, and you know, I am not interested in no way of particularly in a season when you have, uh, an incoming administration that, that places a great deal of trepidation and pressure on our economy, in particular, particularly our local economy. These are individuals that provide tree trimming services. These are individuals that, you know, keep our, our streets safe, right? These are people who show up during emergencies. So, you know, laying off, you know, people of Chicago is not something that I am interested in, in at all. And as I've made a vow and a commitment to receive all incoming ideas, I will continue to do that.
And then kind of piggybacking on our colleague talking about what happens January 1, if there is no budget passed. And in layman's terms, for those who aren't thinking about bonds and, and pensions, can you explain what government looks like, those services would look like? If there's no budget passed?
Yeah, again, the goal is to, to pass a budget by the end of the year. Um, I know all of our Alders are committed to doing that. No one wants to, to, to put the people of Chicago in that.
No, uh, Doreen, this is the video after the budget vote was delayed. This is the video you were asking about, dear. Um, I was just, I haven't gotten probably the part you wanted to hear, but this is the video after, uh, it was delayed, love. And I think, I think this is the one you said you wanted to see. Um, right, U S Army, that's all he does. Uh, Robert, I hope and pray so. Um, Trish said Tom Homan is playing with this fool. He's, he's up there, can't speak, stammering. Yes, he's a whole fool, Trish. I'll play some more.
Position, and it's very simple. If we don't have a budget, there's no appropriate appropriations line for the services that people rely on. If we're not in a position to pay the workers who help make sure this city runs, um, those services go away.
I mean, there's been some discussion among those elders, um, good afternoon, by the way. Um, saying that some of the things that you've wanted to do, I think they said $50 million to expand some of the programs you already have, like the, uh, youth jobs. And I think it was 28 and you wanted to go up to 30, whatever it was. They said, we just can't afford to do those expansions in the services. They said, we just can't afford to do those expansions in the services, so.
Of course you can't afford to do the expansions in the services because you spent all the money on illegals. That's the problem. Oh, my God, it, it, it's, it doesn't take a rocket scientist. Oh, how you doing, Sherry? James says that cockroach was a school teacher in Chicago. James, he needs to go back.
Is there, is there a willingness on your part to maybe scale back the values when you can't afford and you don't have the money to do everything you'd like to do this year?
Well, as I said, we're gonna continue to bring, um, people to the table to offer up ideas, you know, and I can say this, um, you know, a budget that ensures that our young people are investing in is something that's important to the people of Chicago. You know, I don't think it's a coincidence that in the neighborhood.
Like I said, we could sit here, all he does is blow smoke up your rear. Um, Blackson, what do you think about this guy? This guy? Uh, oh, I can't with him. What are your thoughts? I'll see if I can find the one, uh, Doreen, I thought this is the video you wanted, uh, with the, uh, fight today. Okay. What do you think, Blackson?
Well, I think, um, the same way they got rid of Lori Lightfoot, they need to get rid of him. I don't know what steps they gotta go through in Chicago specifically, but again, we've talked about that. They're trying to, okay, they need, yeah.
Prosperity, last time she was here and then she dropped the, um, I went on and I pulled up the website. So they are definitely, they're trying to get him out.
Yeah, they need to use the same exact playbook to get rid of him. That's my thought on that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah. You know, but a- again, um, Tom Homan's already starting the process, so again. And again, you know, people, like I said, I had to listen to what being said. They said they're not gonna give him no assistance. Tom Homan said, I don't need assistance, just stay out of my way, so.
Oh, yeah, move.
Yeah, just get out the way and won't be any problems.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna give him no problems, though. They just want to assist him, but again, I don't think there's gonna be any issue.
Right. Okay, I have the video, uh, that, um, Doreen is talking about, uh, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted the one after they were, uh, they canceled, um, the meeting. She wanted, uh, me to play the video where the fight broke out at the city council meeting. Okay. All right, let me get that. Thank you, Doreen. Um, I have it. I thought you wanted, uh, that, but we're, we're on the same page now. If you're enjoying this content, folks, hit that like button for me. All right, and those of you who are here, the link that you just saw me drop, this is the video that Blackson and I did last night. Please check it out. Uh, yes, the Democratic Party, the party of diversity, equity and inclusion. They, uh, discriminated against the black staffers. You can't make this up. Doreen, this is what you wanted, right, love? All right, I hope you can hear it clearly. This, yeah, so this happened a few hours ago at the city council meeting. Here we go.
The loser just got here. That's why we late. The loser. No, we don't. Look at this loser. Oh, she about to be famous on her birthday. She about to be famous Friday on her birthday, y'all.
Right, Badgerton, that was, uh, uh, Ludacris had a hit song, Move, B. Uh, get out the way. That, and that's what, and that's like Tom Homan. It's like, that's what he said, just move. Um, I'm looking for, all right, where's the fight? All right. What do you think, Blackson?
Okay, so I'm, I'm just looking at this to see what started the fight. I'm, I'm guessing they got outvoted, so. We need to see what was going on here.
Okay, go ahead and read the comments for me. Let me see if I can find it specifically.
Start in the middle, start in the middle there. Wait, scroll back down.
All right.
All right. No, 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 go back down.
Wait a minute, I'm trying to, um, you know, sometimes people will have a timestamp. And, uh, 6:30, okay, let me try 6:30.
Okay.
All right, let's see. No, I'm trying to get it here. Okay, here we go.
Part of this is.
Speak up, speak up for our rights. Let's go. Speak up for our rights.
Public speaking.
You want your seat, you better speak up for our rights. Their seats is over. I know that. What did he say?
What you say?
No, you said. We are. We show love, MAGA. We say what we want to say. Talk to him. Don't talk to him. He called us an M word, yes. That's offensive. Now, I take offense to that. So, no, it's offensive now. I wanna say, I, I'm offended. I'm offended. Keep coming over here to us. Get out. Why your face covered? Why your face covered? Oh, yeah. Get your, get up out of here. Yeah, we are. Get up out of here. What she got? What she got? What she pulling out? What she pulling out? Get down. Get down. What she pulling out? What you pulling out? Why y'all watching us? Don't be watching us. Now we gonna whip her, if we gonna beat her down, we gonna be wrong. Look at them. Yeah. All these immigrants in here, yes. Don't say nothing to me. No. Woo, talk to them. Talk to them.
I'm talking to them. I'm talking to them.
She has something. Talk to them. She has something. She has something in her sock. Yeah, all these illegals. She could have had a knife or anything. All them damn illegals that get them illegals, I them illegals. I felt, I felt threatened. Y'all saying my name. I felt threatened. 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 Afro Lee.
I think that's what, uh, I, I think, yeah, well, I'll post this video in its entirety.
Okay, now ask me what I think, Miss Lynn. That's how that works. You ask me, I'm like, huh?
No, I was wanting to know what you felt about him just basically saying nothing. Mayor, how are you? Go ahead, uh, Blackson.
So, yeah, this right here, yeah, you, you can always tell Antifa members, they always got the mask. It's just like.
Yeah, I was looking at that. Why you, oh, my God, they're sitting there with the masks on.
Yeah, it's always a dead giveaway.
Oh, my God. Hit the like button, folks. Oh, you can't make this stuff up. Then, and Florida's right, they feel like they have more rights than everyone else in the room. And that's not right. Uh, James, see Friar, tell Roland to do a story segment on the border wall theft. Yes, James. Um, now after that, this is.
Malik said, how did they vote? Yeah, how did they vote on this?
So they, remember, they, um, postponed the meeting until, uh, next week.
Oh, okay, okay, that's right.
So he, he probably had another panic attack or anxiety. He may be in the hospital again, someone.
Now, what was this particular vote on?
They're still trying to pass a budget. They're still trying to pass a budget where they're trying to jack up all these. Now, remember, we did a video on what, what initially, his first budget was $300 million. They voted 50 to zero and said, all his city councilmen voted against him. If you've been here on the channel for a while, you know, I'll drop it. If you want me to drop the, a link to that video, Blackson and I already did a video on that. Um, where are we? Malik, Malik, how are you, love? So Malik, what they did, they postponed it until next week. I already, I started playing a video, but Doreen told me, no, I want, Doreen wanted to see the fight, so I had to put the fight video up.
US Army Retire said, no Antifa where I am, too many retired military and that rednecks around. US Army, there's too many Trump frags while I'm around. There's too many Trump frags, so, you know.
Woo, so James, the Chicago way, put off today what you can lie about tomorrow. Oh. He just called Chicago out. That's Chicago. I'm happy too, Malik, Kami. These illegals are bold, out of pocket and downright nasty, like this ain't your country. Get out and go fight to build up, right? I, I'm telling you, uh, since I, when I started this series, prosperity was, her, I think it was, she said it was her husband who was actually recording that, uh, one of the illegals, no more money for you. No more money. You lazy. You. Like, dude, what are you, what are you talking about? And she's there, like so many other people, fighting, uh, for their rights. Because it's obvious they're mayor. And, uh, their city council people weren't helping them. How you doing, Sky Queen? Uh, Sky Queen said replay the fight. Woo, the fight has it. Okay, let me see. It was at 6:30. All right, I can do that for you. All right.
Go, go a little bit before, sister. Go to 6:25, because I want to get the whole context of what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah, put the captions up too, because I want to hear everything, if, if you can.
Hold on.
Gotta have public speaking first.
Speak up, speak up for our rights. Let's go. Speak up for our rights.
Gotta have public speaking.
You want your seat, you better speak up for our rights. Their seats is over. I know that.
You gotta have them.
What did he say?
What you say?
We are. We show love, MAGA. We say what we want to say. Talk to him. Don't talk to him. He called us an M word, yes. That's offensive. Now, I take offense to that. So, no, it's offensive now. I wanna say, I, I'm offended. I'm offended. Keep coming over here to us. Get out. Why your face covered? Why your face covered?
I get it.
Oh, yeah. Get your, get up out of here. Yeah, we are, MAGA. Get up out of here. What she got? What she got? What she pulling out? What she pulling out? Get down. Get down. What she pulling out? What you pulling out? Why y'all watching us? Don't be watching us. Now we gonna whip her, if we gonna beat her down, we gonna be wrong. Why y'all watching us? Look at them. Yeah. All these immigrants in here, yes. Don't say nothing to me. No. Talk to them.
Sit down or you're gonna have to leave.
Talk to them.
I'm talking to them. I'm talking to them.
She has something. Talk to them. She has something. She has something in her sock. Yeah, all these illegals. She could have had a knife or anything. All them damn illegals that get them illegals, I them illegals. I felt, I felt threatened. Y'all saying my name. I felt threatened. I felt threatened. I felt threatened. I felt threatened. I felt threatened.
All right, I think we, uh, got it again. All right, uh, Blackson.
So the best way to identify these Antifa members, because they all look the same.
Yeah.
If you want to get an idea of what a typical Antifa member looked like, even though this man died before Antifa, look up Gigi Allen. Gigi Allen, the way he dresses, the whole his demeanor, the way he looks.
Yeah.
Every Antifa member looks like Gigi Allen with a mask, so if y'all curious what it, identify, look up Gigi Allen, y'all know what I'm talking about.
What are your thoughts on that little scene?
Um, again, you, you see how the Antifa members were strategically, like, there was one in every row.
Yes.
And how they're doing things, but they all had the mask on. And they all got the weird bright colors on and they all look homeless, like, like.
Yeah, they do look, yeah. They look like MAGA bombs.
Oh, yeah, they're all, they were all seated in each row strategically.
Uh-huh, I noticed that. Man, they're punks, yes. Um.
Right, but one of the Antifa members was screaming, stop Cop City. I noticed they do that, but it's not even about Cop City. It's about, you know, the, the migration. So I guess they're, they were there for a whole different reason, I guess. I don't know.
Why do you think they were there, Blackson?
Well, the guy says stop Cop City. So I know here in Atlanta, we, we have Antifa members trying to stop Cop City. So that's the whole thing that they're against, like, um, police being set up in their cities and training. They, they are far leftist group, you know, I don't know, I've, I've, uh, encountered them maybe once or twice.
Yeah, yeah.
Stone Mountain, but they, yeah, they, they, they're a bunch of cowards, so, you know.
Yeah, they're far leftists and I guess they were mad that these, uh, uh, Chicagoans are, are right, uh, on the right, uh, with Trump and MAGA. It can make it make sense. Woo, music therapy. They are not as mobilized or organized as Chicago, Los Angeles, uh, San Francisco, all these cities. One day I pray. Yeah, 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 yeah. CJ Park said, uh, US Army served in Heidelberg. CJ Parks, I went to Heidelberg, Germany when I was in high school and I loved it. Um, James, the Antifa guy was saying, stop Fanny.
Stop Fanny, okay.
Yeah. This happened today, Mayor, at the, uh, city council meeting, where I tell you, this is, uh, TV worth watching.
Well, well, James, I agree with that. Definitely stop Fanny. Definitely stop Fanny, you know, because she, she's on some other stuff. She's on some thing, taking taxpayer dollars and going on Carnival Cruise Lines, going to Martha's Vineyard on our tax dollars. So, yeah, stop that. Yeah, definitely stop that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Oh, my God, this, this is something. Now, hit that like button, folks, if you're enjoying this. Share this on your various forms of social media. How you doing, Big Dog Conserve?
He said, keep voting Democrat, this is what you get.
Big Dog. Okay, Big Dog, I think you're new here. Now, let me, let me tell you about, uh, Prosperity and some of the other guests that we've had from Chicago. Um, they've been voting conservatively for 20 plus years. But unfortunately, they are surrounded by people who continue to vote for Democrats. And, uh, you know, some of the people that I have had on the show from Chicago, they're trying, their best not to lose their homes. They, if they jack these, uh, real estate taxes up, they can't pay their taxes. Right, Doreen?
Yeah, Miss Lynn, let me address this. When James said 80,000 to her boyfriend. James, you know, they got her trapped like a rat right now because they're asking for coordinations when she went to, her and her boyfriend went to Washington. They're at, they got her cornered, so they're.
Yeah, yeah.
Paperwork and they're saying, do not shred the paperwork. And you know why, James, they're asking for the paperwork? Because they already got the paperwork.
Yeah.
They're giving her a chance to fork up the paperwork voluntarily, but they already got it. Yeah, they got her trapped like a rat, James. They got her trapped like a rat.
And again, if you notice, every black female that the Democrats stuck up, put up here on, on the mountain, hey, every one day, black female they tried to use to bring down Trump, guess what's happening to them? So, you know, and again, you know what the Democrats do? Do I need to show Homer Simpson fading away into the hedges again? They put you out there and they, they're gone. Um, Lynn, I think sanctuary states must pay restitution to their residents for decades of supporting illegals. Good music therapy, uh, therapy. Big Dog Conserve, um, are you still here? Doreen, uh, says, yes, Roland, we will lose our homes. Doreen, we're hoping and praying. Um, the, the cavalry is on the way and we hope that will not happen. We're speaking that into existence right now. Kami, Roland and Blackson, have you heard about what the illegals are doing in the UK, Germany, Sweden, Ireland, Italy, Poland? Cammy, Roland and Blackson, have you heard about what the illegals are doing in the UK, Germany, Sweden, Ireland, Italy, Poland, Norway, Denmark, Paris and Spain? This illegal immigration situation is a nightmare. Yes, and Canada too. Uh, and Cammy, it's just, no one gets the red carpet treatment, but people who come to America illegally. And so, once we make it not so accessible, and once they know that it's, there's not a free ride, instead of coming through five, six, ten other countries, they won't come here. They'll stop somewhere. Instead of wa- walking through all those countries to come here, they'll know there's nothing here for you, so let's go somewhere else. Thank you, Cammy, for that info. She said same thing in Canada. Wow.
Therapy said, hey man, I pray we restore order. We must stop rewarding illegal immigration. Well, this already started in New York. They've already started. I mean, music therapy, they, I think what the immigrants, a lot of them were inspired to come here because they would have resources, they would have food stamps, money, housing, clothing. Once that's all cut off, that, that kills the motivation. That kills the motivation. Nobody's not gonna risk going across the Rio Grande, jumping over snakes and scorpions and coyotes trying to get here and ain't no resources.
Yeah, they're like, nah, I'm good.
No, but if you hear it was resource, then you'll take that risk. But, and you dragging your family across too? No, they not gonna take that risk knowing they're, the resources are dried up. No.
Yeah, you have to deal with the drug cartels and all of the criminal activity.
Right.
You know, that they're involved in as you're passing through all these countries. Oh, no. Stay where you are or go to a neighboring country and try to make that better. But no, we're, we're full. We're all full. Prosperity, how you doing, love? Oh yeah, Prosperity's on the move. We, we just finished talking about you, love. Uh, glad you're here, everyone. Hit the like button. If you're watching and you're not subscribed, please, please, please hit that subscribe button. Uh, Media Soundbites, it seems like everyone's talking points are the same with this Mayor Johnson situation. It's obvious, y'all are not from Chicago speaking on this matter. Media Soundbites, we are not from Chicago, however, if you look in the chat.
Prosperity is.
Prosperity is. Media Soundbites, you are new here. Uh, Prosperity, as well as, uh, many other guests have come on the show and they live stream from the city council meetings and that's how we know what's going on. We're not at the meetings.
But we're well connected. We're well connected. We plugged in.
Yes.
Right. We plugged in.
Yes, we are. Yeah. None, none of us, uh, well, Doreen may live in Chicago. Uh, Chicago, oh yeah. Um, Doreen lives there. Thank you. Prosperity, I, I see you, girl. I see you. Um, right, uh, Prosperity, you know, people just drop into the live chat and make random statements. So we're trying to explain to them, yes, you know, we don't live in Chicago, but you sure do. And Prosperity has been on the show. She's brought other people, um, on the show. So we're, we're getting, you know, video of what is actually going on in those city council meetings.
And also, not only do we know people like Prosperity in Chicago, but we've known about these policies a year ago. Whenever, when, when you're sitting there watching P Diddy and Ellen DeGeneres and all interview, we were dealing with policies.
Yep. We've been, yeah.
So, so welcome to the show. Sit down, take notes and just.
Might learn something new.
Might learn something. We do this. We do this over here.
Right. And so me, uh, Media Soundbites is probably gone because that, that was the only statement that they made. So, uh, whatever. Um, and well, hey, what can you do? Could be a troll, uh, because they haven't said anything else, which is fine. Um, so that's pretty much, you know, what we wanted to share with you. Uh, again, we are with Chicago. Um, I was talking to Prosperity. Uh, I, I hope, uh, when this stuff starts going on, maybe on my spring break, maybe I can go to Chicago. I'd love to go there and just live stream. Oh my God. Woo.
I can see you at one of the meetings, Ms. Lynn.
Oh, wow. I mean, I would just be. And I've always wanted to go to Chicago. I've never been.
Too.
Um, I just, I, I could, I could go. I just never, you know, take time off work. Yes, Tina, we're all, we're with you in unison. We're all praying for Chicago. We want the best for Chicago. We want those illegals out of Chicago. James says, good pod. You too. Thank you, James. Thank you so much. We don't, and, and we're Generation Xers. People can come in and say whatever. We don't wear our feelings on our sleeves. We are fine.
No, I love, I love when people try to, try to challenge our accreditations. My thing is stick around. But once they see that we legit, they don't stick around. Please. Me on some policies. Yes, I'm waiting. Yeah, because this is what I, this is what we do. We've been doing this.
Right. And then Cammy, look, Cammy made an excellent, uh, statement. I'm not from Chicago. I'm in Canada, Toronto, but what's going on in Chicago resonates with me. That's a truth bomb. And it resonates with Blackson. It resonates with me. It resonates with all of us. We're all in consensus that what is going on in Chicago is totally unacceptable and it's wrong and it's illegal. Florida, if you go to Chicago, I'm going to, Ms. Roland. All right, Florida, you know you're welcome, girl. Uh, Big Dog Conserve needs, you need bodyguard. Yes. Okay, Media Soundbites is back.
Okay.
By the way, the formal speaker of the house, Mike Madigan, is on federal trial this week. No media coverage. Been in office for forty years. Oh my, yeah, we've been talking of Media Soundbites. We also talk about term limits. That is too long. A lot of these people need to go to Shady Pines. Hit that like button if you're enjoying this content. Sky Queen said, yes, this is happening everywhere and it is. Immune, uh, they hurt, we hurt, praying for them. Yes, immune them. This is America and the reason, like I said.
So what, what is, um, this Mike Madigan, what is he, what is he, uh, charged with, uh, media?
Yeah, you want to know what? Yeah, that would be.
Yeah, I want to know. Yeah, like, no, yeah, let us know and I, I might look into it.
Music Therapy, seems they were offended if anyone not from Chicago had a viewpoint. Right. Hey, we, we're not from Chicago, but we're talking to a lot of people who are, who are a lot, who there at the city council meetings. You can't get any better than that if you can't be there yourself.
Oh, trust me, if Kamala Harris would have won every si- state United States, would it became a sanctuary city? Every state.
You got that right.
Shoot, no. Hey, Kelly Ray. Kelly Ray say that Chicago is trash like Milwaukee. Kelly Ray's from Milwaukee. Both Democrat ran and corruption from decades. Shake my head, millions upon millions missing in both cities. No answers. That's right. That's all we saying, Kelly.
Yes. Prosperity, they're, they've been warned yesterday by me, do not hire lists will have their name. Or yes, Prosperity. Yes. Um, C Fryer, let's all go to Chicago in twenty twenty-six when Trump plans his year-long Fourth of July celebration across America. Okay, C Fryer, that's an idea. Uh, Monday's the new city council meeting. Yes, Doreen. So, uh, Blackson and I may have to go live a- a- and do something with that. Prosperity is, she's doing, she's laying the groundwork. She, uh, we talk frequently. She is letting me know. Um, everything, every detail. Big Dog, he's a lifer. Big Dog, he needs to go. Donald, Mad Maxine, all of these old people, get some new blood in.
Oh, by the way, y'all, just real quick news. Um, what's her name? I, I told you her name earlier. Uh, uh, Nancy Pelosi's in the hospital, y'all, so. Y'all can pray for if y'all want to. I don't know. She, she's eighty some years old. I mean, you tell me what.
Go to Shady Pines. That's the problem.
Well.
Okay, listen, uh, media, if you still hear Media Soundbites, Prosperity's saying that she'll be there at the city council meeting Monday. But they are saying possibly Wednesday is when they're gonna have the vote. Okay. Muka Johnson at Media Soundbite, you're correct. All the media coverage is in Dalton, Illinois. It's designed that way to keep the coverage of Mike Madigan. Okay, uh, Muka. Hit the like button. Muka, hit the, uh, subscribe button. Okay.
Oh, they clowning, they clowning Nancy in the chat.
Huh?
They're clowning Nancy Pelosi in the chat. Everybody is.
Oh my God, yeah, she's probably drunk.
She tripped and fell off her facelift.
Truth bomb. Stella, Stella Singleton, hit that like button. We love it. Fell off of her broomstick.
Yep.
Oh my God, it's hilarious. I love it.
Oh, C Fryer said here from Barry Cunningham that she broke her hip. Oh, snap.
Oh, she did?
Ooh. That's what, yeah. Yeah, he's a purely legit source. He's, yeah, Barry Cunningham, I'd be telling you about Barry Cunningham. I'd be telling you about him, Ms. Lynn. Yeah, yeah, he, yeah, he's, he's, yeah, you need to, uh, check out his show, but yeah, he's pretty legit.
He probably, Nancy got drunk and fell down. I heard from Barry Cunningham. Oh, boy. She's still, they still can't get over this election.
Hip, yeah, she might be in a wheelchair then. Broken hip.
Yeah, she's old too. She's eighty-four. Yeah, she's eighty-four years old.
Yeah, you ain't no restoring that hip.
No. How you doing, Linda? Glad you made it. Make room for an extra day in Chicago. It is the second most beautiful city in the US. All the food is great and you will love the Midwestern hospitality and it's on and popping. Go to the fifty. Okay, Linda, hit that like button. Hit that subscribe button for us, love. Glad you're here. We're almost to a hundred like, ninety-four likes. All we need is six more. Mayor, uh, Pelosi getting shots of vodka in the hospital.
Having an IV drip.
No. Woo. Woo. Nice to meet you, Stella. Hit the like button, Stella. Hit the subscribe button. We'd love to have you here, uh, more than just tonight. What's your, what, what white bag was she trying to pick up, CJ?
Oh, Lord. Y'all, y'all stop it.
Doreen is right. If she broke her hip, she is done.
She gonna be in a wheelchair. Yeah, that's wheelchair.
Yeah, she's done. She wouldn't go home. This might send her home. But they may roll her in there. They rolled in, uh, Feinstein and then she did it in the world just to get a vote. And she, she was just in the wheelchair with her eyes closed. Geez. How you doing, partner? Chef fine is wine. Oh, you're just getting off of work, love? Uh, glad you're here. Glad you made it. Um, go ahead and drop your channel link, please, uh, Blackson.
Okay.
Wine is wine, if you'd like to. Go ahead and drop your channel link now that you're back online. All right. I would love to see what you're over there cooking up. Remember she dropped a bag with a white substance at the D S C.
Oh, Lord. Oh, y'all, that's terrible. I remember she walked out on stage and she had toilet paper stuck to her damn shoe. I remember that. White, I remember. Only thing white I remember was that toilet paper stuck to her shoe.
You know, my funniest Nancy Pelosi, remember she put that Kente cloth on? They, and they all knocked down. I forgot who else. Doreen, what was it?
Kamala was there. Kamala was there. So was, uh,
Cloth.
Yeah.
And, and got on their knees and she couldn't get up. Mitch is still freezing. He needs to go to Shady Pines. James said Nancy's husband hit her with that, that hammer. I guess the same hammer he was hit with. Oh my God, I can't. Woo. Yes, Mayor, they rolled in Jimmy Carter. He does, God bless him. Does he know he's in the world? They roll you in a wheelchair to get a vote. They don't care. How you doing, Joanne?
Yeah, they don't care.
Hit the like button for us. Hit the subscribe button if you're enjoying this content. I forgot about the toilet paper on the shoe too. Oh my God. Please, term limits, people. Please. Woo. Oh my God. Rocket, grammar audit. U S Army said, you all are bad. He said, keep it up. U S Army. Woo. Shady Pines, yes, Shady Pines. Let's get the van and let's pull up. And all these people that have been there thirty, forty, fifty years, Mad Max, she's got to go to. Hit the like button, folks. Hit the subscribe button if you're enjoying this content. I am. Um, and like I said, folks, uh, Mayor said that's elder abuse. Yeah. Woo. Um, all these mayors, folks, that have been talking all this talk, that's all it is, is talk.
The Moon has said Biden got one more time to fall and he's done. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's taken a couple of falls. He's gotten, he's lucky. Yeah, he's lucky because he's taken some bundles.
He was falling all over the place for four years. U S Army, we're glad you could make you laugh, dear. So we share information on this channel, but we also like to make you laugh because everyone is fighting a battle that no one knows anything about. So if we can make you laugh, hey.
Um, Luna, Biden's got less than thirty days. I think he can make it. I think he can make it, but you know, we'll see.
Woo. All I can say is all of these sanctuary city mayors, huh, they're doing a lot of talking now. But, uh, all I can say is Tom Homan is, uh, gonna handle all of that. Prosperity said, I posted a new video of what happened during the fight. It was a fire. It was a fire outside and inside. Oh. Prosperity, when I leave, drop your channel link.
Prosperity, did you record that? Shoot.
You know she did. She, she's on it. She's on it. Hit the like button, folks. Three more likes and we're at, we'll be at a hundred. Um, one of my favorite songs is, I was thinking about all these mayors who are doing all this talking. Nineteen eighty, Pat Benatar. Well, you're a real tough cookie with a long history, breaking little hearts like the one in me. That's okay. Let's see how you do it. Put up your dukes. Let's get down to it. Hit me with your best shot. Why don't you hit me with your best shot? Do, no, 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 no. Hit me with your best shot. Fire away. And you know, that's what, that's what Homan is saying. Come on with you. Come on. You don't fight fair. That's okay. See if I care. Knock me down. It's all in vain. I'll get right back on my feet again. Hit me with your best shot. Come on. That's what Homan's gonna say to him. I love it. Woo.
Well, I'm trying to understand, like, the mayor, are they over the, uh, city police?
Yes, uh huh.
Okay, so they're over the city police. So that means. Okay, okay, so hmm. I'm just trying to see how this would play out if he orders, because I know he's gonna order them to stand, if, if they order them to stand down, that means not to assist. But will they actually try to interfere and how would that play out? Like you got federal agents coming in and then the local state police, the federal agents override them, don't it? The federal agents override the state police, don't they?
Oh, yeah. And, uh, the president has each branch of the military. They will conform. Um. Yes, Mayor gives the orders. That's right. That's right, Sky Queen. Yes, Prosperity, they want him gone. Yes, we made it to a hundred likes. All thanks to you. We love you. I'm telling you.
Yeah, Doreen said, yep, yep, the feds override that. Okay, that's.
The president has the military. The, the federal government.
Well, it doesn't even have to go there, Ms. Lynn. What I'm saying is that, okay, so the mayor's over them, but the feds override.
Yes.
Okay, so then that, that's that.
Think back in history, you know, when states were trying to do their own thing and the government was like, uh, no. Um, and like I said, I can't wait until this starts. Like my favorite, um, uh, one of my favorite Carly Simon songs.
Okay, hold on, hold on, Ms. Lynn. U S, uh, said the president can also federalize the National Guard. Okay.
And, and I think Trump did say that he would, so we'll see. And, and, and one of my favorite Carly Simon songs is anticipation. Anticipation is making me wait. I can't wait, people. I cannot wait. Woo. Legal si- Sky Queen, you still? Legal sit, Sky Queen, you still laughing at me, yes, and I love, oh my God, I absolutely love Carly Simon, yes, I'm old, I still have albums, yay. Thank you, Thor, how you doing, love? Sky Queen told me to hold my horses, yes. Well, I hope, like I said, we just wanted to make you laugh a little bit, and, and we had uh fun, and um, we'll go live, what, tomorrow? And don't you ever, ever stop. Thinking about tomorrow, don't stop, it'll soon be here, it'll be here better than before, yesterday's gone, yesterday's gone, woo. I'm just looking for, I cannot wait until January, I'm, I'm really, I, I mean, I can't, I'm, I'm anticipating it, but it's hard. Um, so we're going to go, uh Stella, uh Stella asks, what time, um, what time will we go online tomorrow, uh Blackson?
Tomorrow's Saturday, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what time do we usually go on Saturdays, was it one o'clock?
We go on sometimes. Two, about two, maybe two o'clock, you wanna go?
Yeah, I think two, yeah, that allowed me to burn some leaves, yeah. Yeah, I'm still burning leaves, oh yeah.
You're welcome, Immune, we're glad to be here for you, love. Yes, Prosperity, and don't you fight, we are all supporting you one hundred percent, sister, we, we, we're here for you. Stella's is new, Stella, um, the governor Priska's got to go, the mayor's got to go, everyone's got, Chicago is crooked to the core, rotten to the core. Stella, since you're new here, love, I just dropped a link, we did a video last night, check it out, hit the like button, love, leave a comment. And all of you who are in here, we're trying to share these videos out to more people, do me one favor, once I end the live, um, and you actually, if you go back and click on the video, leave a comment, let me know what you thought about the video, let us know about some content that you would like for us to discuss, and we'll try our very best to do it. Yes, Prosperity, the fight is real, this is no joke.
Yeah, and, and there's no limits, y'all, if y'all want some international stuff too.
If you want the international stuff, Blackson has that on his channel, the Arena Uncensored. Um, so yeah, he does more of the international, and I do more of the uh local stuff here, Moms YouTube, we're leaving now, dear, but you can do with a replay. So yeah, we're gonna go, um, go, uh, when we end the uh live stream, I'll talk to you as long as you're in the comment section. Uh, but please, folks, go and leave a comment under the video and let us know what you thought, what we can do to improve your channel experience. We're going, you know where we're going right now. Straight to the comment section, thank you again for spending your very valuable time here at the Rollers Reviews YouTube channel, we'll see you tomorrow, two o'clock-ish, maybe, something like that. Okay.
About two, yeah.
About two, okay, alright, we'll send you in the comment section.